Thank you for the accommodation. So, Mr. Dixon, we're gonna go back to item one, I'm sorry, item two A, which is La Canto High School pre-IB students. And, Mr. Muller, did you want to introduce? Or did you have somebody come up and hand it over to someone?
Mr. Roush is AP teacher at La Canto High School. And I had the pleasure of observing his classroom and the way his students were using the iPad. With all the money we spend on iPads and all the conversation that comes up about whether students use them or don't use them, I felt like it was a good opportunity for at least this example to show George how the iPads are useful in this program. And I know it's distributed in a lot of other places.
Mr. Roush, you look very familiar to us. Is there a reason we might recognize you?
Yes, my name is Peter Roush. It's my first time privileged to speak to you guys. What I believe Mr. Kennedy is referring to is yes, I'm infamous in one way or another, almost like the protagonist in the movie Rudy. I'm a 25-year teacher. I'm in my second year here at Citrus County. Prior to becoming a teacher, though, I was a professional athlete. I played football for the Chicago Bears. I played for the University of Notre Dame and earned two national titles. And I actually happened to be part of the movie cast for Rudy when they were filming on that. And so many of the people don't remember the latter parts of playing in football or any of that they just see, and it's Rudy all over again. So, I would share with the board a two-second story that did bring to La Canto. Just three weeks ago, I was at school and I received an email and then a fax came across Ms. Ed's desk. It was a Screen Actors Guild contract from Sony Pictures. The Rudy rights have been purchased by the TV series Goldberg and School, and they were using my likeness and asked her to come out and be, to be a member of the TV series. Unfortunately, I had to turn it down, particularly because of this week. We have homecoming, football, and to speak with you guys. So, and I'm honored to be here. Like I said earlier, I am a teacher of 25 years, even though I've only been involved in Citrus County for the last two years. I come from a district or background that was not privy to one-on-one. We didn't have technology advancements. We were pencil and paper, the whole mortar-carry-the-book-bag type of approach. So, this is new to me. This is something that has not been part of the wheelhouse of my instruction. I only say that to preface, as much as my students, and that's sort of a misnomer too, the AP World instruction, I'm not just here with AP students. I'm not just here with pre-IB students. I'm here with Gen Ed students. I'm here with ADD program students. These are the kids that I get to instruct or have the privilege to instruct on a daily basis. And what I'm finding in my very short time in this district is that the one-on-one technology is pushing the educational value that we have here by a light speed. And we've been asked to present that. As we're going through today, what you're going to see presented by my students, not by myself, is they're going to show you their average day in my classroom. And when you ask me, I'm gonna try to shed light on the fact that I'm not replacing writing, I'm not replacing reading with technology. I believe that writing is an essential piece to everything we do. My history class, for example, is a writing class of history. They must learn how to express themselves through written word, and it's important. And you can't necessarily do all that through technology. But what technology has done, it has allowed us to focus more on the written word because we're getting through some of the other stuff quicker. And it takes the time of the instructor. The title of our program is Technology in the Modern Classroom. I need you to go with me on this idea of a modern classroom. It does not mean the technology that we have within our room. The modern classroom is working outside the four walls in which my classroom sits. Most of the learning and education that happens within my students happens outside of the room. It happens at home. It happens at practice. It happens on the bus. It happens in those continued contact time that I have with them. But since I cannot be with them on a daily basis, you know, I can't follow them to dance class, I had to figure out a way that I could continue while they would like me to go to dance class. But I would like to reach out to them. And what they're going to hopefully express well to you is we are connected 24/7. I was at all, I'm on this little note, I'm gonna bring up our presenter, our leader in a second. Just the other day, I had the privilege of being here at an in-service. The in-service that I sat at was for mentorship. And I got busted. I'll just speak long. I got busted off-task. I had my iPad up and I had my little NearPod going. The NearPod was going great and I'm following along and everything good, but my computer was open and I was typing vigorously. I was in the middle of conversation. Who I was in the middle of conversation with, though, was my students. Since I was told from my classroom, and I was in a mentoring session, they were taking a test. And the test was online. And then an online test, because of the software that we have, Vivil, I was able to monitor them directly at that moment. I saw every question that every student was on. I saw when they were failing, what questions they were having. And I knew who was giving the effort, who wasn't giving the effort. And so all of a sudden, I looked over at their screen through our mind program or through our testing program, they started giving little notes from me. You know, it's like, what are you doing? Why are you not focused on this period? Why are you off-task? And all of a sudden, this, Lindy? Lindy came behind and she goes, what are you doing? And I'm like, um, and then she looked at me, oh, that is so cool. And then all of a sudden, we spent a few minutes, I'm showing her how my classroom had extended outside its walls because I wasn't in. And that's what modern education is about, and that's what we're gonna show. With the board's permission, I'm gonna introduce my team with me today. Everything you're about to see was generated and created by them. I did not give them words. I asked them what they would like to show you from their day, and so what you're going to see is what they do on a daily basis. But first of all, you should know who they are. I have freshmen at Avid, Gen Ed, and IB program kids. In addition, I thought it was important, I wanted to show where La Canto is. You know, La Canto is such a melting pot. We are a magnet for so many things. The kids behind me all come from here. Fernando, Floral City, Crystal Springs. And in other words, I'm trying to say is, it's not one elementary school, it's not one middle school, it's not one single program that literally produced them. They all come from all different backgrounds of education and foundations in the middle school level before they got to me. And now this is who they are and what they're doing with me. Okay, so with that, you guys stand up a quick and we will introduce ourselves.
My name is Cameron Wadner, and I'm a fifth student at La Canto High School.
I'm Kage Newman, and I'm also a fifth student.
Tell me something quick. What?
I'm Walter Keller, I'm also a fifth, and I'm a member of World Middle School.
And Phillip, I'm also a fifth, and I'm a big individual in the program at La Canto.
If you're Avid, are you? Well, yeah, say, multiple programs. So, they do take the history. Our presenter, with board's permission also, each student would like to work with you during these presentations, is it okay if they come up with you with their iPad? So, if you can work long. Guys going backstage, Cameron, why don't you go ahead and take lead? Yeah, absolutely. Ask Mr. Bishop if he could sit in front of the sideline and you could share.
So, I'm gonna get started here. Our, overall, like, as Mr. Roush was saying, is that the technology hasn't replaced the paper, it's really expanded our knowledge in the classroom. And one of our first resources that we use is actually, Mr. Roush has created a website for us to use that has all of our links, all of our resources, that easily makes it so class access is the, like, the simplest it's ever been. And I'm gonna have Catherine come up here and present that, so.
Hello. So, we use the, this is the website for Roush's new press. And it's LHSAPWorld.com. Okay, so, how do you access the website? For this, for our students, it's very easy. Once you have a browser that you prefer open, we usually use Chrome, that's what we prefer, you type in www.lhsapworld.com. And, or if you have a bookmark, which most of these students have a bookmark, you can just go to your bookmark list and click the desired website. So, the purpose of this website is to make students' life experience here. The class website makes accessing class materials straightforward, so you don't have to memorize so many other websites. Yeah, and this is just where most of our classroom is. We use this website for multiple things. Ninety percent of our work is on this website. If you go under the Home tab, there's a drop-down list showcasing different types of information. For example, how to set up your binder, field trips that we do throughout the year, and crash course in the course description. Under the Unit tab, the drop-down list shows everything you need for that unit: lecture notes, PowerPoints, vocabulary, and study credits. And this helps us for what we like to understand. Under the Socratic method tab, it'll take you to an informational page, outlining the steps of Socratic activities. There's an interactive activity which allows students to understand the lessons more in depth through questions and answers. Last but not least, under the More tab, you get two options, which are lesson plans and support web links. Double-click on the support web links, it brings you to another page with a list of web links you will need. For instance, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the page, there should be an orange button that says Crash Course. If you click on the Crash Course, there should be another page that pops up, and that will show you all of the Crash Course videos we do throughout the year. We use those for more understanding of the lesson, we take quizzes on them, we have a worksheet we do on them, and yeah.
As you can see, as they're busy showing you the website, what I'd love to do is take a quick break from that, and I'll take you to the website to show you some of the simple features. If we go to our website, at the very top of it, you can see that we have a one-stop-shop. The one-stop-shop here allows direct links to everything that we do in our classroom, from My AP to Remind, NearPod, AP World Text, Virtual Digital, the Google Classroom Assignment, and ITG. The kids will be showing you how they utilize these on a daily basis, but what we have found instantaneously, I will ask a question, I'm sorry, I don't know much more. With all our kids, maybe they're gone through school. Have you ever tried to pick up their bookbag? I am a professional athlete. I would not want to carry that bookbag for seven hours from in-between classes. As of this moment right now, the only thing for AP World, which is a rigorous course, and it's history, so you know the multiple supplements we have, the only thing they need to bring to my class is an iPad. And before we're done, you will see how their binders, how their folders, how everything they do digitally, text-wise, is all available. And then we'll be showing you how all of this is available without Wi-Fi. It's not a Wi-Fi-based case and program. Many of them can be, but several of them are not. Everything from our OneNote to our virtual tags are all literally digitally-stored one-time resources, okay? But we're gonna go to our next presenter, and our next presenter is, who am I? Cameron? Go ahead, go ahead.
So, our next subject is gonna be OneNote, like Mr. Roush just said. We have these things called e-binders in our classroom, so that we don't have to keep all of the papers in like a clung mess, things like that. And this really helps you get that organized, and I'm gonna have Mackenzie come down here and she's gonna show you guys all about OneNote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'm gonna be talking to you about OneNote. OneNote, what it is, is that it's an e-binder that helps us as students organize our classwork, homework, tests being taken, et cetera, into a digital binder that is very accessible. Our AP World History class also has the Teams app set up, and with this, we can go straight to our class notebook, which is through OneNote. So, how we navigate through OneNote. Once you're on OneNote, you will see three different parts of categorization, which are Notebook, Section, and Page. The Notebook category is where all the classes you use OneNote in will be displayed, so that you can click on a subject, and it will show the folders you have for that subject. For example, I use OneNote for my AP World History class and my Health Education class, so if I wanted to go to my history class, I would click on the subject that says AP World History. The Section category is where all of your folders will be kept for a specific subject, and you can add and delete folders at any time. When you click on a folder, it will display all of the pages you have in that folder, which is a page category. For example, if I wanted to go to see all of my maps, I would click on my maps folder, which will then take me to the pages of all the different maps that I have. And how do you add documents into your sections? Well, once you're in OneNote and you know how to navigate through it, the first thing you wanna do is pick the section you want to add a page to. For example, if I wanted to add a page to my Chapter 10 notes, I would hit the plus-page button at the bottom left of the screen and add a title to the top of my page. Once you're in your page, you can start typing in your document, inserting pictures, drawing pictures, and you can even change your page width, paper color, and paper style to your personal preference. In our AP World History class, we use a binder and OneNote to keep our documents safe. When we complete it digitally, then we can simply copy and paste into OneNote. But when we complete projects such as handwritten notes, all we have to do is go to the Insert tab, tap the camera button with the setting on Document, and snap a picture. There are also a couple of things that make OneNote stand out to me and some of my classmates. One thing that I and many of my classmates find extremely helpful is that OneNote timestamp every single document you start. So, if you have homework that is due by midnight and you are somewhere that does not have Wi-Fi, you can do your work in OneNote and it will timestamp when you did it. Then, all you have to do is walk into your class the next day, explain to your teacher that you cannot connect to the internet to submit your homework on Google Classroom, and show him or her the time you did it on OneNote. This function is even more of a blessing to those who do not have Wi-Fi at all, which is reality in this situation. Another function that makes OneNote stand out is the document option on its camera. When you go to the Insert tab and hit the camera button, you have three options to choose from. These options are photo, document, and whiteboard. Our AP World History class uses the document feature when you take pictures of homework, because when you flip the camera over the page, you will make an outline on the page, and you can move your camera into the outline of all of the recommendations. If you take the picture and that line is not quite perfect, then you can also crop the picture and format it. The reason why I enjoy these features so much is because when I snap a picture with the document setting, I am much less likely to get anything else in the picture than a library using photo setting.
Okay. So, first off, I'd like to point out one thing. Can you see why I love my job? I'm sure you're getting firsthand experience. This is what I wake up every day to go into. And even though these eight children are phenomenal, I have 116 of them that I get to deal with on a daily basis that carry the same enthusiasm and excitement about their education. I just had to pause because it's actually sort of hitting me pretty hard over here watching them. This isn't coached, this is them being them. And we work in a profession that's just phenomenal. With that, let's go back on target with this OneNote. If you didn't catch the last point she was trying to explain, this is one of those wireless things that we have available to you. The child can work on this OneNote religiously. He can take his notes, he can take the test, he can take a map, he can take a picture of it. Say he's doing it over the weekend, but he doesn't have internet. The OneNote automatically timestamped it, there's no way around it. It tells you when you're on it, it tells you what you're doing, and so therefore, when Billy comes into school, sits in my class, between Wi-Fi and class, he hits sync. All that goes in. It syncs at that time, but it shows me as the educator, his homework was done on time, on the deadline. If something is lost, if they didn't have it in their binders, all these guys know, I'm terrible. I admit it all, please don't put it in my evaluation, but they'll come up to you, you missed this one, coach. I'm like, what? Damn. I'm like, where's the argument in that? You know what I'm saying? Like, gotcha, not a problem. There it goes in. You know, that's just the way that it is. So, this is just why this is so incredible. Now, the binders that you're seeing is only the catalyst. I've made them create a binder for all of their classes, not just my class, all of their classes. So, this way, they're going to manage their work all in one location that is accessible to them at a moment's notice. They can mic and marginal note, I can make comments about homework, I can grade homework, I can get through all of it in a single swipe. Imagine the time I save from collecting folders. Imagine the time I binder checks, my girls' year at school, folder checks, note checks. I took that out of my job responsibility as a teacher, interrupting direct instruction, because I can do that wherever I want. I can do that at home, watching the Notre Dame game, I can do whatever it is that I'm up to. They no longer have to do it. And more importantly, how was it difficult for a student when they had to turn their binder in for grading and it wasn't with them? It was like losing the security blanket. You know, that's where all their notes were, that's where all their assignments were. Can you get it back to me? Can you get it back to me? Now, they never have to turn it in. It's always with them. I just have access to it, okay? Our next presenter, who's up? This is on blowing my.
Now, this is another, yeah, this is actually a big, big one. I'm gonna have Kage to stand up here. But I'm just gonna elaborate as well on the OneNote, is that, as Mr. Roush was saying, it's not only World History we're using that iPad's in, it's every single one of those seven classes that we're using them in. And like my Algebra II teacher, Mr. Ambrose, we have the same type of thing. We have a OneNote binder, and he actually submits his work through the OneNote. So, it's not like we have paper copies. He actually submits it through the OneNote, and we're able to write all over it, and we're able to do anything that we want to it. And we, it's automatically in there, and he can check it whenever it's time to grade. So, I'm gonna give Kage the mic, and he's gonna go to Microsoft Teams.
All right. Now, Microsoft Teams is a program whose main features are communication and collaboration. Students who join Teams can be organized into any kind of group with the ability to communicate by group chat, online meetings, and basic calling and referencing. Teams also offers a way.
Cameron?
Teams also offers a way to share notes and documents using other Microsoft Office apps, including Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and ShareUp. All right. When you first open the app, you'll arrive in the General tab with Classes Assignment. As is the case in the picture, I'll show on the screen, this includes with the ability to switch classes. Now, in the current class, you can see all the available channels to enter. In the photo, you'll notice that the class has been divided into different tables in which students can collaborate in groups. Now, it'll push all the pending channels, and you'll click the button on the side right there, and it'll drop down with all the channels you can actually enter. Now, once you've selected it, on the bottom right side of the screen, you can see the option to have a new message, to type a new message or to create a new conversation. Now, in a message, you can include text, images, and you even have the ability, in the built-in camera app, similar to OneNote, which will automatically crop physical documents and papers to perfectly fit the screen. Now, when a new message is sent, others will be able to see it and reply, creating conversation chains and threads. The students can help each other and add their thoughts to that document in real time. But images aren't the only way to share information. With Teams, students can link, share, and import files from outside sources. Simply link or share a file in one of the channels, or you can actually link a file from an outside source without ever needing to open Teams. Once this is done, you click on the Files button in the bottom right corner, and this will take you to a page displaying the files you've linked, where they're stored, and the most recent ones you've accessed. Now, Microsoft Teams and how we use it in Socratic seminars. Now, in World History specifically, students use Teams as a way to communicate during a Socratic seminar or Socratic circle. The students will pair up, and one partner will sit in the inner circle while the other sits in the outer circle. Now, students in the inner circle will use Teams to interact with a partner in the outer circle, who is sharing information about questions being asked. The partners will sit in circles every four questions, and the pairs communicate using these conversation threads as an easy way to share notes, images, or any information that needs to be asked.
I will share, this is the best part, just happen, I said to you before in the audience call, body, you can do that. They're literally adults we're looking at, which brings up a point. As I'm learning this, trust me, my little babies show me things all the time that I would get. This Team concept that Kage did not jump on, that I wanna share, is, you have those warm fuzzies of teachers, here's a warm fuzzy. As educators in the room, you may or may not be familiar with Socratic circles. Socratic circles based off the Socrates method of teaching, in which questioning all learning is the big point. We have enveloped a Socratic circle that involves Teams. If you can imagine a classroom in which every member in the classroom of 26 kids pairs up with a partner, so they make 13 pairs. In those pairs, one person sits in the center of the circle, another person sits on the outside of the circle. The one in the center is involved in the discussion. They are the ones debating or discussing whatever the Socratic question is, while the ones on the outside are the researchers. They're the citation, evidence sites. In other words, they're on their iPads, and they're hammering through our readings, they're hammering through our notes and our PowerPoints, and they're seeking evidential citations to prove the question that's being asked in the circle. When they find it through Teams, they're able to throw that data to their person in the circle with never interrupting the circle. So, it goes off on the pad, they're able to see it, and then it's the kid go, well, on page 47 of this, this citation was used. We do four questions in a 15-minute cycle, in which the kids go in and out, in and out, in and out. And as an educator, alls I do is sit in a corner and smile, because they teach each other exactly what they're doing. Where do you find resource citations, verbal skills, field-based, all in the classroom? And they do it, they want Socratic. They need to do more Socratics than we do, because I do that over the assessment lines. And to watch it done digitally now, where all this resource material is available at a fingertip, and they could do it without interrupting, I think they would speak very highly of it. And I bring it up also, because every one we have, the kids vote for Socrates, right? And I'm not sure you know the history of Socrates. Socrates was the questioner, and when he was told he could no longer question, he was put to death, he drank hemlock, poison. So, our kids, they'll have to pick a Socrates, and the Socrates has to prove his knowledge. If he proves his knowledge, he's guaranteed to pass on the test, and he gets one of them. We have our most recent Socrates with us today, and that is Kage Newman, which we're very proud of. So, he thought that he would do it. He did such a great job. All right, Cameron? Oh, one last thing, sorry. Point of order on this one. Mr. Ambrose said he talked about the gentleman that's also using the OneNote to teach us, right? First-year teacher.
In Citrus County.
Quam, trying to make is, we're not ingrained in it either, but we're adapting it and modifying it to be accessible in our classrooms, and it's being successful.
Let me just interject one more thing. One other, you're being witness to eight of the 410 freshmen that are sitting at La Canto High School. So, I'm very comfortable knowing that the 500 sophomores that we have are doing this. You're seeing it from eight of 410 freshmen. So, it has taken off, and of course, you can see it's making a huge difference in the way, in the rate, and how deep they can go with their learning in school. So, I just wanna make sure that you understand, or know that point, folks here. It's just a small piece of what we're seeing at this school.
One of our, like, another biggest of our applications is actually Google Classroom. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this. It's been in the, we've used it a lot over like middle school, things like that. And it really helps students stay organized with their work that's getting onto them, because a teacher can send a message and boom, like, your work is set to you. I have a teacher, Ms. Price, actually. I have a lot of teachers that do it, but Ms. Price is one of the most avid ones. She sets a timer when she submits work, and at that time, it submits it straight to the Google Classroom. Everybody gets the message, and once you click on there, there's a PDF that you're able to edit and do all of your work. And I'm gonna actually have Kelly come up here, she's gonna like go through all the features of Google Classroom and watch the beneficial for students.
This is Google Classroom. It helps teachers, it automatically creates driveovers for each assignment. As you can see here, it just makes an assignment. Create and collect assignments paperless, which makes it easier for teachers to complete homework without using any work. So, yeah, as you can see here, I did this digitally, and teachers can see it just without like collecting papers and stuff. And teachers can also see who hasn't completed the work. I know they can get there, but I can like share directions of how to do that. It's right there, if you can see it here, it's like, this is my Spanish work, it's due at October twenty-eighth, and it even says what time, what time is required. It makes announcement, it makes announcement to start passing discussion. As you can see right here, teachers have, the teachers, my Spanish teacher has made like announcements of what to do on like a specific topic that she has assigned work on. And it also helps students, they can stay organized with one drive, as you can see here, it automatically creates like those digital folders, so you can like, you don't have to like scroll through stuff, you can just go in there and like search for your stuff. They can communicate with teacher privately, as you can see here, teacher has given me like a feedback on what I did, and I can even like, uh, text him back that what was wrong with it. And it even gives us like notifications, just notifications to students immediately when the work is due. As you can see here, I get like a lot of notifications for this stuff, when it's due and what to like, really do, so. And it allows teachers to just add new students, so if you go in like the whole screen, there's, um, there's like a press button, if you press that button, the screen pops up and the teacher gives you a folder there, you can just assign it, and the screen pops up, which is helpful because, um, you are just like safe with it, and they're not only like bad classes with it, and it actually acts like what you're doing.
So sorry.
It allows you to keep track of things, it like gives automatic folders where you can like go to where the class you want, it allows you to keep track of classes, as with folders setting, see Google feedback, help calendar, and to-do list. It allows you to share things with your classroom. It is beneficial for both teachers entering, because it allows both of them to share things with each other in the same and hopeful way. It's right there, as you can see. And it also allows you to communicate with your classmates privately, we haven't done this in the classroom yet, but I think that it could be, I think that it is helpful, especially when they're doing projects, and also when we have doubts and we want to ask someone, it can help us communicate with people without nerves, which can sometimes be just like It gets to mean things that needs to be done, as you can see by paper. The method, this method has always helped me track of things that needs to get done. It is helpful because it allows me to get things done faster, and it allows me to stay ahead of everyone in the process of my work. So at the end, how is it beneficial? The purpose is to facilitate the relaxed communication between teachers and students and streamline education workflow. Classroom allows teachers to create classes, post assignments, organize folders, and need work is due.
Wow, alright. Okay, Google Classroom, Kelly did a great job presenting it. One of the things that, two things I will add to this, and we'll keep moving, is first off, uh, the submission of work, and I would, Ms. Androwski has become like my best friend, she said today that was, I'm a kindergartener, she said something to me today that just made me smile from ear to ear, that we are very close to Google Classroom apparently merging with Skyward, which will allow the teachers that are assessing this and putting grades in and kids adding this, that it will automatically load into our Skyward program, which can save even more time. Uh, one. Second thing that's sort of brought up is, I'm all about time management, if you haven't figured that out. I am all about extending outside our four walls, keeping our kids true. Um, one of the greatest mentors, I, I have the privilege of working with some phenomenal people, advocate of, um, one of them is happens to be Derek Edmond, I'm sure you all are very familiar with Derek. Uh, Derek, Derek, Derek blows my mind out with stuff that he comes up with. Derek does a wellness survey with our students to check, to see how much homework they have. Like literally, how much are you really putting in, what is keeping you from extraprender activities? Um, making sure that these children have a full-rounded high school experience, that it's not just in the classroom. We just did one in my class, and guess who failed that survey with? Ask my children. Who failed that survey with flying covers? That would be me. Failed it miserably, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute. So we spent the next day in class doing one. Don't, I don't wanna speak for them. We diagnosed and broke down everything we did, from square one to square, it's a learning process together. Tell me, how much you spend in our reading, why is this taking so long, how is this going to work? Because our environment has to be one of communication. When we're done, and we revamped what we were going to do, but the thing that became very obvious was a feature on Google Classroom I wasn't aware of, and that's what's concerned. Google Classroom has a Google Calendar, and at the, at the app in the Google Calendar, any teacher that is using Google Classroom that they have, and they're enrolled with it, when they assign them assignment, it's automatically placed on the calendar, and it gives them a timer. So the kid now can go to his calendar and see his projected workload, and know exactly what's coming down the line, so they can digitally plan. It's just out of this world, accessible and useful. Alright, with that said, we'll go to our last presenter, I believe. Two more, okay.
We'll go first, because the last two was-
Pretty quick. Alright, let's go.
Okay, so, um, this is our like testing, like how we do our testing, which is, there's a website called MyAP, and it's, um, it's technically for all of the AP classes, but we only use it for history since, um, right now, that's my only AP class, I'm assuming that's most of your guys' yeah. Um, and Google Forms is like a easy quiz site, and you get to create your quizzes, and I'm actually gonna have Rob call up here, he's gonna explain how easy it is just to have a quiz and test up there, that students can take even when you're not there.
Alright, so, uh, MyAP is very easy to access, all you have to do is type in the website name, and then you log in if you use your name and password. Everyone uses their name and password, it's the same based on their last name. So once you're in the website, you'll see a list of options at the very top, and then to access the assessments and assignments that you have in your certain AP classes. Right now, for us, it's only World History, but to access all of your classes, all you have to tap on is MyAP. And then at this point, you'll go to see a full assignment list at the bottom of the screen, that shows you what all of your assignments are.
Quiz table.
Um, now, once you're on this screen, uh, you'll have three primary options, like all assignments, progress, and results. The Assignments tab displays all the assignments, assessments, tests, quizzes, exams, et cetera. It gives the dates due, when it's assigned, and even gives a time limit if needed. The Progress tab shows what assignments you are currently in the progress of finishing, or making final touch-ups on. It also shows the assignments you may have finished but require teacher grades. The Results tab features all the assignments you have finished and what you scored on them, plus it shows a little tiny scale, with colors, it shows how well you did. MyAP has many purposes and benefits. When it comes to getting results back on a test or exam, uh, it can take quite a while. If you wanna know what you did so you can fix it quickly, uh, you wanna look at the test back immediately. So when you take an exam on MyAP, Angry Forms, you receive a score immediately and know how well you did. Another benefit would be studying, the record of the test stays in the same spot all the time. If you need a study guide for a large test, MyAP will even go back into the assignment and review what is needed. See, if a large test and you need to study some stuff, you can look back into the old questions. Um, these, this is the scale I was talking about, with the colors, it'll show you how well you did based on what score you got. Green being good, obviously, and yellow being bad. Um, and then this is a picture that shows the assignments, the progress, and the results, and everything, you can see that has a start date, a due date, a time limit. So that is it.
We'll move a little bit quicker, like I said, on this one, this MyAP app is brand new. How do you add, I'm not sure the district is focused sometimes on AP scores, AP scores are very important for us. Um, this MyAP is the college board's response to educators' concerns. In other words, too often, the proper preparation for AP courses is lost, because we don't understand the test-making in mind. Everybody knows reverse planning, that, that we need to be focused on that, but the AP never gave us the material to reverse plan with, now we are. But the more important part is of giving it to students. This website, which briefly touched on, once a student takes an assessment, gets their score, whatever they've gotten wrong, they can go back to that question, hit that question, and it will give it a summation of what they got wrong and why. It'll show them, this is where your thought process was wrong. And they can do this on a regular basis, they break it down by strand. It gives you a natural pacing guide for all your AP courses. So when I'm trying to move forward and get to where I need to be, I go back to MyAP and it says, "You should be in the Mongols," right? If I'm not in the Mongols, I, I'd pick up pace, if I'm, if I'm ahead in the Mongols, then I can come up with creative activity, which the kids know I love doing that. Um, so it's important to know that this has become very instrumental, but yet again, here we go. It's education, it's outside the classroom, and the one I love the most, somebody said it to me every year, parents need to know this stuff. And so many parents get so confused about AP, they're like, "What's a five? Is five a ninety? Is a four a sixty? Why is a three important?" Well, this website, because they use it all throughout the year, gets them thinking AP, gets them thinking score, and gives them understanding and conceptions of this is why my student got the score.
Okay, um, so who here likes, like carrying around like a big textbook? I mean, I'm assuming nobody, but, um, we actually have a virtual, um, textbook, and Daniel is gonna explain it to you guys, and we don't have to carry it around, it's automatically on the med pack.
Alright, so, the electronic textbook for our class is right there on this website, vitalsource.com, and there's also an app on the iPads, as well as other devices, such as their phones, wherever you might want to. Now, there are quite a few features that make Vital Source a little bit better. First of all, you've got an integrated annotation tool, let's say, you know, you wanna highlight something in the text, and you can just do that like you would like trying to copy and paste something. And you can choose whatever color you'd like for it, makes the coordination of information very easy. Here's a link table of contents, which means, when you're there, you can click on the chapter and it'll bring you right to where it is. So you don't have to like look for the page number, look for that, type it in, or just flip through. And there's also a search function, so let's say you wanna search for like a specific set of words, you can, and it'll bring you right to that. Um, the Bookshelf app allows for offline viewing, for example, like if you're on the bus or whatever, you can still read it, but you can already do that with a regular book. And regular books actually kind of cheap. Also, the, the search feature in Vital Source allows you to look for specific parts of the text, but it's actually rather unrefined as, like, if I put in the words ancient Sumeria, it's going to pull up ancient and Sumeria, but not in that combination. So it'll look specifically for like the word Sumeria and pull up results at that, but it won't pull up both words together, which makes it not as good to use.
You can see that one was quick. Um, I need to point out two things. I'm eavesdropping, I'm gonna eavesdrop on Mr. Dodd's conversation. Mr. Dodd goes, "What about that kid that's taking traditional notes?" And I'm a traditional notetaker too, alright? And most of the kids in here are also avid in the sense of they're used to Cornell notes, and that some avid worlds Cornell is a bad word. Um, I'm all, I never, so you know, my kids never hear me say, "We're taking notes, we create notes." In other words, the creation of something is something that comes from inside you that makes you able to learn. Taking notes is something that he created for you, and we're not doing that, we're having kids create notes. But with creating notes, I'm not sure this app was presented in here, but on that virtual text, if you said, anything a kid highlights with his finger, he is tapped and it's stored onto a notepad. And so at the end of the chapter, they can simply hit print, and they can have whatever notes they save right on the, right on the line. That way, but they can handwrite them, I always accept handwriting in that sense, this is one of those we let them go. But for those kids that wanna move quickly, highlight, it saves a page, prints the page, and it seriously has a note source, so we're pretty excited about that. In addition, it's a lot better than carrying around an eight-hundred-page notebook or notebook. Okay, let's go to our last presenter.
Okay, um, I'm gonna present to you Cassidy, she's gonna go through NearPod, which is a, um, easy, like teacher-student, um, like answer app, you guys will see as she explains it.
NearPod is an opt-in, many teachers use in the classroom. It allows them to show them notes and ask interactive questions and have, um, certain tasks that make them answer the question that was based on the text they just learned. In this, it shows the different kinds of tech, the different ways to use it. Mr. Ross uses it to present the overview of the text, and then he'll lecture with the notes, and it'll be interactive for the student. My Spanish teacher just used this to give us notes for Day of the Dead, eh, she used it to present us information, and then we had feedback questions on them. How did this student and the teacher interact on NearPod? The app allows the teacher to quiz or have the student answer an open-ended question. Sometimes they even add a drawing activity. If the NearPod is strength or disrepair, the teacher may add notes for the student to also use. NearPod is better than traditional PowerPoints, because it allows the student, the student to stay engaged and learn the material at a more efficient pace. Many students find the quiz edition to help if they're having trouble with the material. Without this, some students wouldn't suppose that they're grasping, they aren't grasping the material. This allows teachers to address the information that may be troubling. Without this function, many students may go on and not understand the concept. With a traditional PowerPoint, it doesn't allow the teacher to know that the student is struggling. This difference, the difference it shows in learning is progression, they're fully drastic. This is an example of the open-ended question that we had for Spanish class the other day, and this is the quiz example that we used in Spanish the other day. We also did a drawing activity, and we used the timing of the climb, which is a interactive thing with your peers.
We're moving fast, because we know we have a lot to talk to you guys. That was actually my last student presenter, so what I need is my babies, say, say thank you to everybody who's come and seen. Are we gonna take, take a selfie?
Of course.
Alright. They won't take pictures of me, they're gonna go about whining.
So you can tweet it out later. She just got a new phone, so, thank you.
I, I feel your pain, I said, we'll show question on that one, too. I feel your pain. Boy, was that a lot, right? I mean, that's, I appreciate all the engagement of us, but that, you may be shocked at this, but that, we will use all of those probably in a single class. At some point, we're doing, and you can just imagine, I will do direct lectures for fifteen minutes out of the NearPod, they'll open up their virtual source text, they'll take notes right out of the note, the text notes, then they'll swing over to Google Classroom, find the graphic organizer that I put on, they'll go into Teams, start sharing the information, and we did all that in an hour. And it just progresses everything that we have. It's all about diversity, giving them all the knowledge. First thing people always ask is, "Well, isn't that too much?" You know, one of the biggest things is the multi-platforms that we need to perform. What I've learned is our kids learn in different economies, you know, they, they have different pedagogies that work them through education. You'll notice when we came up here, one young lady introduced the video series, another one interviewed the PowerPoint with the notes, another one like, we, we will provide our, an educational purpose with different methods. And if I tried to do that within a forty-seven-minute class period that I'm allowed to do, I would never get that. That's why I hope that when I said to you when we started, when I'm introducing you to the modern classroom, the modern classroom is not forty-seven minutes, it is not four walls, and it's not within the period in which I'm with my kids. My education with them and our shared learning experience to make them lifelong learners extends throughout the entire day, throughout the entire year. They have a saying in my classroom, they know very clearly, "Once my kid, always my kid." That's just the way it works, once my kid, always my kid. So when Mr. Coon sat up there and says, "Well, I'm pretty certain that there's eighty sophomores, or I'll have you up the sophomore class or fourth year that can do this, I can guarantee you that there's sophomores that can do this, because they ran through my classroom and Mrs. Price's classroom, and the other, and they're learning these life skills." I've been challenged before when I've gone to enough programs, says, "Coach, I don't understand, Teams is a lot like Google Classroom, why are you teaching both platforms?" Let me explain to you why. When a child goes off to college, the opportunities of him being accessible to a Google Classroom is probably rare, but guess what they will have? Microsoft Teams. And so if we are truly aiming towards the future and having all avenues open for our kids, we need to make sure that we are teaching them multiple platforms. We don't wanna move away from the old school, I would say as a teacher, we did not invent the wheel, we're just putting spokes in it that we're going to use to make it roll. I believe in the old, you know, pencil, paper, that's, that's in my blood, and the kids will- And the kids will always use it. They will always write on that. If I didn't believe in it, we wouldn't do it right because the AP test is written. So, they must learn to write. But I think by a moderate way using my classroom and bringing technology in, it's allowing you more to write in class. If you think about that, I can do this stuff at home now or I can do this extended. So, my class period can be just a timed writing. And that allows me to be there with them and they're writing. So, I'll end on that. And I wanted to just, once again, thank my children for being such incredible kids. I want to thank you guys for being patient and listening to me. And for all the support I want to thank for a job. I love being a part of the Citrus County family. It's only been a short time and I hope to be here for quite some time in the future. Thank you. Coach, please, anything you got? Really, not one?
Coach, one of the... You talked a lot about this and it's, it is embedded into all the work you do. You talked about Teams, OneNote. Any of us in business utilize these tools. A lot of, you may not even know, but if you work as a custodian at Oak Hill Hospital, you're not going to be able to get your orders unless you get them through a tablet. So, the interesting thing to me isn't just simply the workflow and a good use of time, good use of the tools at hand. But it is about getting them ready for college and career readiness. They don't know any different, which is what's wonderful, that they're using tools that they're going to be using to be successful in their college and career. And I just applaud you for that. It is risk-taking. It is not easy as a teacher. They're smarter than you by this half, the half of the first class of the first day. And it also, as a teacher, you know, as a husband or teacher who utilizes this in the classroom every day, she reminds me, this is a lot of work for the teachers to plan for this, to prepare for this, to respond because often, students find this interactive. And so, grades, in their opinion, are interactive. Where in our day and age, we turned it in and maybe a week later, we might get it graded. Well, usually, it's by the end of class. "Why didn't you grade it? I just turned it in." And why isn't it in Skyward? Which, Ms. Androski, I agree. She is phenomenal and she is working to bridge that gap for us. So, I applaud you for that. One of the challenges that we always see is, how do we have the tools to do that? And you're integrating a lot of tools. I'm a believer of that workflow as I really still wish there was a single product. Ms. Androski knows this, that Google Classrooms helps us. It's getting us there. There's still, I think, opportunity if Microsoft were listening to us. If Amazon would listen to us, Apple and even Google, that we still need to go another step farther. We need to be able to integrate all of this with the textbooks.
Teams is evolving.
It is.
But they're behind, like you said. But our kids aren't. And so, to address that kind of challenge, this is simplicity. I cannot wait for the bus. We can't wait for Teams to catch up to my kids. And my kids are ready now. I have to get them ready for college. And so, if Google is the platform that they need to be able to address that right now, that's where I'm going to embed them. But I would be foolish if I didn't salt it with Microsoft Teams or NearPods or whatever line. Everything we do is geared for them forward. That's it. That's the only drive I have. What I had to this, we had a gentleman in the district. I know he left, and Dan Cox. First guy I ever met. He melted my brain. And I sat in the room and he said, "Hey, look, I have 101 apps in 60 minutes." I remember, if Ms. Androski was here, I'll never forget. I went into that thing and I felt like I was going to fall out. And he just goes, "Do this, do this, do this." And it made me realize it was an educational moment. You know, we have our epiphanies. I literally said to myself, "I get my kids." If someone throws, if I threw this on my kids, they would melt their brain. So, I'm being very careful, as well as the rest of educators, to introduce things slowly, but not to stop introducing. So, we keep going. Like, our next step is Iggy. Iggy's one of the best in dramatics programs about reading comprehension and grouping that we can do. That's where I'm going next. But I will also share this. Our school, as well as this county, has a great job of PLCs. I go to the free tech programs all the time and meet with your tech people. The people that come to our school are phenomenal, led by our assistant principal, Mr. Tim Borg, is phenomenal at tech. He comes in and assists us. But now that I'm getting better at it, I am modeling and bringing in my colleagues to see what I'm doing. And it's extending. And that saying about old dogs know tricks, that's not true because we got a bunch of old dogs learning a bunch of new tricks. I have a gentleman in my family that's going to drop, Mr. Novak, probably the best historian I've ever met in my life. And I'm talking at college level. And now, he's doing Google Forms. Now, he's doing podcasts. And he's not, I'm an old man. He's not doing necessarily great yet. But this is a guy that thought that iPad was a payboy when it first started. And so, we are moving forward all across the world.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is really exciting stuff. And students, you know, they're appreciative of you all being here today and spending time with us. That's very impressive. And I want to tell you, this tool in this district has made a huge difference, providing one more initiative for iPad. Kids, this is a huge cost that the district has put out for all of our students to have this done. My concern in the past was in the high school level. I didn't see it used as much. And today, what you've shown me is the ability that this tool can be used. The challenge going forward, and I've got a son who was at Emerson Middle School last year, is at Citrus High School this year. You know, I still want to see more use of his device. And, you know, but when I see things like this and this collaborative learning, this ability for teachers to have the opportunity to use this program, you said it yourself. I mean, there's a lot of time saved.
Oh, yeah.
And so, there's a lot of advantages. Of course, the learning is a big part. We want to see that. But I really appreciate being able to see this aspect today at the high school level. And I'm very impressed.
Appreciate you saying that.
And Mr. Todd, you know, my daughter's a junior at Crystal River High School. Probably the first thing that's told to her, remind her from her mother is, "You've got to charge your iPad" when she gets home. Because she cannot function in school without it. It is embedded into everything from her textbook to her notes to her dual enrollment now. I mean, that's another thing that we, you know, don't always realize, but our dual enrollment students are often using that in their classes. So, I'm grateful to this district as a parent. It has not been an easy task, as you said, Mr. Dodd, to make this commitment. Ms. Powers isn't here right now, but Ms. Powers and Ms. Bryant and I were on that. And I know that was a leap of faith, Ms. Bryant, that you all made.
Yes, it was.
She may be the longest-serving board member, I believe, right now. But I will tell you, she's probably one of the most innovative users on her own, even when she doesn't give herself enough credit. Because she does have one of the latest iPhones and she does utilize it. And she can.
You like this? I just, it dawned on me when you said that. iPads are great, right? I mean, we all look at them. But one of the biggest complaints that people have with their iPads, especially our students, when they pull up a resource and they want to add, that digital keyboard comes up. When that digital keyboard comes up, the screen is cut in half. They're like, "Oh, I can't see it. I can't see it." These, and a magnetic and signed to the iPads. They link up immediately. They don't cross signal. They're Bluetooth, not Wi-Fi. So, they don't cross the connections. It turns every iPad in my room into a portable laptop.
Do you have a class set that...
Yes, sir. And I'll ask you a question. What do you think the, if you can, what do you think the cost of these?
$20 a piece.
Very good. You're like $29.99.
Truly, I did not just...
That's a great guess. But for a class set now, we've taken the iPad from just being a portable device online. When we use a pad, it sums up. They now have laptops. They now have a usable type of screen that allows you rapid working. And this is an invaluable tool. Especially when we're doing mashup. So, like you said, every step forward. Answer.
Was it Grant or a Saks?
We went to our Saks, for example. Oh, no, I went to the boss.
The boss found the money.
The boss found the money for me. But I will say this, it's a pilot thing. So, I made this...
You got a grant. It's so talented. We call it Grant.
We put it on a card. I did with portable chargers. So, now it's on a card. Any teacher that wants to use it in a class, I can move it from classroom to classroom. It takes exactly two seconds to hook up an iPad to it. And like I said, they don't cross signal. And we, they did this type of way. And it's a really ingenious little part that we put in this here.
Coach, you know, I love that you teach like you coach or you coach like you teach. I think great coaches are great teachers and great coaches are great coaches. And I think one of the biggest compliments outside of referring to somebody as dad is coach.
Agreed.
That said, we need sometimes to be coaching